Okay, call to order the committee to hold a meeting for Tuesday, January 9th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Beraza.
Here.
Nancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Chanset.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Serone.
Vocal singer?
Here.
Item number two, reminder, please speak directly in the microphone for BATV recording. Item number three, approval for minutes for August 8th, September 26th, October 10th, October 24th, and November 7, 2023. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Move back second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Number four, items removed or added from the agenda? Anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Item number five, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that has something to speak about that is not on the agenda? Item number six is consent agenda. Alderman Becker, you can read that tonight?
Consent agenda reads as follows: Resolution 2024-2-R, accepting a quitclaim deed for lands adjacent to the wastewater off of Flynn Street. Resolution 2024-5-R, approving task order number eight with HR Green Engineering for residential traffic speed study for an amount not to exceed $21,500. Resolution 2024-6-R, authorizing execution of task order 2G for construction engineering services for the Carriage Crest Detention Basin construction with V3 for an amount not to exceed $140,556.28. And Resolution 2024-4-R, agreement with Quad Plus for relay communication testing. I move we approve.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number seven is a discussion on the tree removal at Carriage Crest Detention Basin. Andrea, you're starting us off on this.
Hello. We have kind of worked with V3 and over the last few weeks and between all of us, we've been off a little bit on paid time off. So we want to get this tree removal plan out to bid as soon as possible just because we want to get the trees removed prior to March 31st, which is where we have northern long-eared bats to contend with. But the tree preservation plan, Laura, do you have control? Or me? I can put the plan up there.
Aye.
So the V3 prepared the plan to show all the trees that will need to be removed to provide adequate volume for the stormwater basin. And that count is 154 trees. If you want to go down to the third page, kind of shows. There's no contours on this map, but it does show where a majority of the trees will be removed, and those are on the northern end of the site. We're not really touching the slopes on the south end closest to Parkview. And one of the main concerns we had once this tree preservation ordinance came into play was the fact that the haul off for the material ends up costing a lot because of the potential non-hazardous waste that is found throughout that park site. So we were trying to balance not having to haul off as much. And so with that, we decided that if we kept it onsite, we could do a berm. It's safe to plant the trees in, but then it would reduce that amount, which in our engineer's estimate was up to $2 million. And the cost to replace the trees, although I understand that the value of these mature trees is not necessarily quite the same, but the replacement cost per the ordinance is roughly $77,000 with 154. And Scott Haynes helped me work that number with the prices that we usually get for those types of services. So I know the residents are very concerned with this, so we wanted to bring it back before we place it to go out to bid. And because we did just receive this last week in order to get it on here, we're still going to be working with Scott Haynes to go out there and evaluate any other trees that may need to be taken down. These, again, were just purely for the grading. With discussions with Scott, he wants to make sure that once trees are taken, or the trees that are shown taken down, that it does not affect any of the existing trees that are out there from any type of damage they may have from wind that would come through now that they're currently blocked. And now they'll have some of those trees removed that could potentially cause them to fall at a later date. So we're looking at that as well when we evaluate anything. So that kind of is just a summary of it, and I can let it be open for discussion at this point.
The Aldermen have any comments they want to make right now or questions?
I have a question. Just curious if the Tree Commission had a chance to review this plan?
They have not. I got this Thursday last week, and Scott was out with a family matter until this morning, so.
Hasn't been emailed to them or anything?
No, I want to work with Scott on that, and so he was playing catch-up and all that. But I did want to get it in front of the council to take a look at and see what the feedback was.
I mean, I understand, obviously, that this needs to come to us, but also, we have a Tree Commission because they're the ones who are knowledgeable in this area, you know? I'm looking at this and on Google Maps also, trying to compare the two and like, okay, sure, I don't know. But I would love to have the eyes of the Tree Commission on this.
And Drew Reck, I was also looking at this based on our latest ordinance. So prior to going out to bid, we'll make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted.
Andrea, this is Alderman Wolf.
Hello.
Hello. I guess the question I have is, I'm trying to remember, did we have this site before with trees that were originally proposed to come down on it? I was unable to find that today. I was trying to find, go back through minutes and find that. And I didn't remember if we had a plan before that showed what we originally thought was going to come down.
This is, I think, the first formal one that I've presented to you guys. They had given us something before, and then the tree preservation ordinance got passed in November, I believe. So in the background, as that was coming to you guys for review, I had passed it along to V3, and they were looking at that and had given, provided us a list that Scott Haynes had looked at, and I had looked at as well. And I walked out there to kind of assess some of the trees. And this was the finalized plan.
Okay. Because I'm just trying to wrap my head around where this is going to be in relationship to where the basin, you know, proposed site was and have that, you know, to help me make my decision on, you know, am I okay with all these coming down? I mean, I know we want to do this and rectify the issues we're trying to do with the stormwater, but I also want to balance that with how many trees we take out. And to me, it looks like that's grown exponentially.
And that was, as I said, trying to keep the cost down with the haul off of the material.
Correct.
So if you look at this area where the trees are on the south side, and there's that entrance coming in off of Parkview, that area is existing where the slope kind of goes down pretty rapid in that area, and that's going to actually be relocated because that will not work. It's like a slide. But the basin is kind of in that area where the cloud is inverted. And then where the trees start being removed on the north side is where the slope goes up. Some of those, you'll see the catch base or the flared end section kind of in the middle of the plan. Over to the left, Laura, right up a little bit in the, to your right, right there. So that's kind of the low end, the bottom of the basin, and then we go up from there. So there's a lot of trees that are on the side slopes currently. And we, one of the things we wanted to do is remove the infiltration aspect of the basin. So we're going to be putting a clay liner in. So some of these trees do need to come down as well to install that clay liner, to remove that infiltration. So that's part of it. And then the other aspect is just being able to put the fill material here. And I did ask them to look at the existing contours versus the proposed to see if we could save any trees or work the grading around there. And in some areas, as I mentioned, I think in my memo, we were doing up to five feet of fill. So there isn't very many opportunities. I don't even think there's any here. We tried to save some on the east side of the site, but in the middle, there just wasn't that opportunity. It was looked at, though.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at this, it's really the items that are the Xs that are going to be the ones taken out. The ones that are kind of the L are the ones that are going to remain. Is that correct? Trees?
The one, yeah, the Xs are all removal, and then the other ones are just, yeah, the Ls, so those are just their tree tag numbers. And in the second sheet of this plan set tells you the characteristic of the tree, the size, like diameter at breast height, and the species name, and it gives you the tag number.
Well, it looks like you guys have kept a kind of a perimeter of a lot of the trees or the in that's being taken where the work is going to be. You talked about where that slope was, where you're going to be moving it, where obviously it looks like there's two trees there.
Can you explain that again?
Where you said the slope was, where they're going to take the trees out, I'm guessing it's where the, I don't know, the little gravel looking area, that's where everything was going to be taken out from that area. And you said that that's, is that where the biggest slope is going down?
Currently, that is.
Okay. But you said you're going to move that.
We're going to move the entrance. It's a construction entrance. It's just not feasible really for the type of equipment that's going to be going in there to do this removal. It's at probably a one-to-one, two-to-one, so it's pretty steep. So we're going to have to.
Are you considering on moving that, the new construction?
It may have to go, move the construction fencing on the west side. We've accessed from there before when we had to do the, like by 1301 and 1303, we can pull it a little bit to the west there. We've accessed at that location in the past when we had the soil borings done.
And are you going to have to remove any of those trees?
We'll have to double check and look. That'll be like the final look-through when we go out there with Scott.
And is it possible to preserve the two trees that are looking to be taken out from that slope area to leave them?
I can look at that and find out what the, what the characteristics are and what the quality of those are. Because, again, one of the things you guys have to also take into consideration is that while there are all these trees out here, we haven't really had a maintenance done on this. We haven't been able to go through, like the Forest Preserve just did, and did the undercut removal over here. Like, the best example I can give you is at Fabian and 25, where they went in there and kind of cleared some of that. There's a lot of trees that are too close to each other. Even I, who am not an arborist, can tell. You look at the trees, and they're really tall, but the diameter is very small, which you know, that's probably not something, that's not normal. It's, you know, just like I think of that Dr. Seuss movie, you know, the Lorax and those tall trees waving. So some of that is the stuff that Scott will be looking at, but I'll look and see about those trees, John.
In this, you know, and again, I'm a very visual person. As you brought up the Fabian Park, is that something that, you know, residents would be expecting to see, just to kind of set the plan of, you know, with, with all that removal of all that ground brush and those dead trees and those bad trees, you know, is that something that they'll probably expect to see from this project?
I think we're going to try and leave most of those trees that are in that southeast corner there. Again, I'm not the arborist, and Scott has to get out there to take a look at that, to just assess that with the quality. But if there are some trees that need some trimming or anything like that, while we have a contractor on board and in that area, we will be utilizing them to kind of do some of that routine maintenance as well.
Does that area kind of have the same underbrush where there could be some invasive? I haven't been out there to see.
I don't know if they're invasive. There are a lot of them that are, they're, you know, taller than myself, so they've been there for a while. I just think it's one of those areas that maybe we might not have focused as much attention on and only went down there when the trees came down or had an issue.
Justin, you have a question?
Questions. For clarification, does the soil have to remain within the project area? Is there nowhere else, anything else we can do with the soil? Maybe not at the site, anywhere, somewhere else in town?
Yeah, if it's deemed, if it proves to be like a special waste, it would need to be kept onsite in order to not have to be, because if you move it elsewhere, now you, you essentially move that problem. So no, it has to stay onsite.
Okay.
And I don't know that it is special waste. We're just concerned about the history of the site being a former dump back in the days.
Ah, fair.
Yeah, so we don't know what we're going to find.
We don't know what we're going to find. Yeah, exactly.
We only took select borings. So we do have some additional funds where we may have to take some of that off because some of it may not be great to build the berm and have to bring in some material as well. So unfortunately, it's a little bit more unknown than we're used to.
This is just a minor question. What's with the tree removal right above the playground over there? Is that just a legend mark?
No, that is, unfortunately, that is going to be directly from the basin going to the east to the lift station.
Oh, okay.
And the lift station is situated kind of just at the southwest corner of the existing lift station building. So that's where the storm lift station will be placed. And one of the things we will be working on is the tree replacement plan. And I kind of just did a quick calculation, and I'm hitting like 35 to 40 trees we can get on the top of the berm. When we do them in a little bit more compacted setting, not our standard parkway setting of 30 to 40 feet, we may be able to get 20 to 30 feet across from tree to tree, center-on-center spacing. So we will still have, you know, maybe 100-some trees that we're going to have to place. We can look at placing some of those in the Park District. Obviously, where we're removing the tree, we'll have to replace some in-kind there. But we'll be looking at this neighborhood and this area to replace those trees.
Is the berm is actually going to be?
It's going, it'll be right up on the top, so about halfway. I can send, I do have, I brought a plan. I can pass it around. You guys can look at it. It has my notes on it, but that is the top area here.
Are, how far is off-site? I mean, I know that not all of this area here is city-owned. It's Park District, it's Geneva Park District. So if it just moves to Batavia Park District or Geneva Park District land, then that's considered off-site, and then we get into the.
Different parcel.
One quick question. I'm sorry if this was in an earlier meeting, but the construction fence on the, the west side, I don't know what side that is, how close is that to the residents, the homes?
I will be asking them to put the property line on there, I believe. More close to the Geneva Park District property line on the north end, but then as it curves, I think we're still a little bit on our property. It's just some finishing things that we have to get clarified on the drawings to make it a little bit easier to find in just space when the contractor goes out there to stake. There are northern, northings and eastings on there for a surveyor to go out there and pull that. But I know, even just for us looking at it, there's a few items that we're going to have them update.
Will we be planting trees on Geneva Park District property?
I'll have to have a discussion with them. We're not removing any of them. I just have to see what their take is and if they would still like to maintain their open space. Maybe they'll be able, willing to have us plant some in between the path and the existing tree line. Chris?
Just from a visual thing, basically everywhere the Xs are, is either going to be towards the southern end will be where the clay liner is, northern end will be where the berm is. And then on the berm, you're going to plant, you're going to replace as many trees as we can based upon spacing.
Correct.
All right.
And then the rest of the stuff will have that native, native planting, so it'll kind of resemble the basin out on Kirk Road.
Right, okay, thank you.
Gary, you had something?
Yeah, I just, if I'm a resident and I'm priority, prioritize the trees, I'm not happy with this plan. If I'm a resident who prioritizes the trees, so we keep the trees, and then we minimize the stormwater basin, and I'm the resident who has a flooded basin, I won't be happy with that plan. We all need to remember that this project has just been a series of compromises trying to find the best solutions that we can, working with very challenging site conditions. This is a historic municipal dump. It's a historic development where a developer got away with putting in a detention basin with no outlet. The soils out here are challenging, both from an environmental and a, and a composition technical standpoint. Yeah, I mean, all aspects of this project, we can say, is that perfect? We're not doing a gravity sewer, we're doing a pump solution. We've had to make compromises left and right on this project in trying to get the best possible project that we can that serves the best and the most number of people. And so, yes, I think if we end up with a vote that, that everyone is unhappy with, that means we got the best vote we can get. Because that means that we have tried to get the best compromise that we can get to serve, serve the best out here. That's that. The other thing, I just did want, did want to make a comment on the Tree Commission. We need to remember that Tree Commission and the other commissions are advisory bodies. And especially over the holidays, you know, that commission doesn't continue to meet. That commission, I think our last meeting has been October or September. I can't remember our last meeting. I'm on the Tree Commission. I can't remember the last meeting. I think it was September, October. So timing-wise, we just haven't been able to get to the next commission meeting. And I would hate to have this project held up waiting for the commissioners, who will be looking at this plan for the very first time, not knowing any of this other background information, to have them look at it. When we've had our own in-house arborists look at it, that our design engineers look at it, we've had our in-house engineers look at it. This plan has been looked at by a million different people. So I do believe that, again, if we come to a compromise vote, I think we've all gotten the best solution we can get out of very challenging conditions.
Gary, anybody else have any questions? Were there any residents that had any questions?
Yeah.
If you can come and step up to the microphone? And if you can just provide your record, your name for the record?
Sure, I'm Brian Murphy at 1060 Pontiac Drive. Right behind, if you look on the map up there, if we could leave that up, that would be great. To the, I guess if you know how to read a map, it would be to the northwest on the property or the diagram up there, too. Yeah, thank you. I think we're moving along on this project. First of all, as Gary mentioned, it is a compromise, and we all understand that. Those of us that are here tonight in response or to, to this discussion live directly around and primarily to the north of the proposed basin project. So we are the ones who are on the front lines, if you will, of the, of the project and will be most impacted by anything that goes on with the trees. I do appreciate Andrea sending this information to us and having it available. And I know everyone has worked very hard with this. And again, we have also been affected by flooding ourselves in the basement, so in basements and other areas of our yards and things like that. So we all want this to continue to move forward. That being said, just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up and some ideas and some questions that we have that we would love to have answered regarding the tree removal plan and then the future final plan for the retention basin, the slopes and the excavation. In no particular order, I think we've, we've touched upon that primarily, the $2 million potential extra cost maximum for the soil removal. Are there any other factors that we're missing in terms of what might be in that soil, what the concerns are? I know, obviously, if there are some EPA and environmental regulations that go along with that, what other things would preclude the soil from being removed? And what are some other specifics, if you could, on the additional costs? Because that $2 million obviously is a very significant amount.
So clean construction disposal debris, CCDD, is, is material that comes off a construction site that can go be, be placed in a landfill essentially. The state standards for CCDD are very strict, very few, very, your run-of-the-mill soils are fine with CCDD, but, but they, they don't allow really any other potential contaminants in those, in those soils. These soils, we've done several tests, we've had several borings. These would not be hazardous waste. They would just be called special waste, which is that category in between CCDD and hazardous waste. If it just has something, it's not going to qualify for CCDD, therefore it has to be special waste. And special waste has to go to a special waste landfill, not to a CCDD site. And special waste landfills are farther geographically away, and therefore your trucking costs escalate a lot.
Okay, so that would be the primary cost, additional, potential additional cost with that, with the removal. Okay, very good on that. What are some alternatives to that? Are there any alternatives to that in terms of, you know, perhaps not being able to remove all of the soil? Have, is there any way to determine, you know, through V3 or some other engineering aspects or places, what else we could do with that soil onsite that may lessen the impact of tree removal? Any other ideas or potentials to get some of those ideas in a timely manner so that we can, you know, continue to move forward?
Dig a hole for stormwater, we got to put that soil someplace.
Right, right, right. Any, have there been any other thoughts, any other, I'm just throwing things off the top of my head, talks with the Park District, if they could use that soil, if it's able?
Well, it goes.
Just throwing it out.
What Alderman Piper asked, you can't, you can't haul it offsite. That's the problem.
And the site would have to be in the footprint of the existing construction area.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Are there any other unknown characteristics? Are we certain that there's no potential for finding some toxic waste? PCB, I know Furnace Electric for years had issues with that. Their soil was contaminated, and they had to go through the mediation. My thought is that they're obviously close to where Furnace was. Was there, you know, things like that could pop up. What happens if that is found? What is a potential, just in your professional opinion, that that might be something to be a concern with? And if it does show up, what could we do?
Andrea already mentioned that we do have some provisions. Will be some provisions in the contract if we have to haul off some soils, yes.
Okay.
And we have had, we have had soil testing done, so there was nothing of that concern that was found.
All right, all right, great. Another aspect of the whole situation, I guess, with the basin, as most of us who've dealt with this over a long period know, is the geography, if I'm using the right word, scientific word, of the underground areas in the general neighborhood with the underground, and I'm using the wrong term, so forgive me, the gravel rivulets, if you will, or streamers that.
if you will, or streamers that have, that a lot of this water that has been, that when it accumulates in the basin, seeps into people's basements and seemingly random areas. That is the primary flooding that is being addressed with this. Are there any potentials for that to be disturbed where, you know, we remove some soil, we remove some fill in there, and oops, we accidentally hit, you know, an underground gravel rivulet, and now we've created an additional problem? Has that been looked at? What kind of assurances to the best that you can give? Has that been addressed?
So, obviously with gravity, water's not going to flow up, it's only going to flow down. And so, if the water is coming from the surface today, flowing down into these gravel seams, and then flowing horizontally to the basements, we're going to put a clay liner up here. So, any disturbance we do up here, even if we expose something up here, the water that may be down here is not going to be affected by that, because the gravity's not going to allow that water to come up. So, we're only disturbing up here on the surface. We're not going subsurface like you're describing at the basement levels.
Okay, all right, good. With the berm itself, if there is, and we do the berm where it's an additional five feet, I'm assuming, first of all, that the berm area where it's raised five feet above current levels would be to the north. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then to the south, that would be at its current elevation, correct, for the most part?
Correct.
Okay. So, then we would not be creating an additional capacity in terms of height, if that's the right word or term I'm using, because the primary concern with that, with the local residents that we have, is are we building basically a taller bathtub that the water could, in a catastrophic manner, or something bad conditions occurred, would spill out into our backyards? Because obviously that would be higher than our backyards and our basements, and we would have some concerns that, or we would have some asks that that not be allowed to be created, that condition create to happen. That, in that same vein, also, the potential for additional just surface water runoff into our backyards, that is a bit of a concern too, because if we raise the elevation and the slope facing our properties to the north, I guess, non-engineering common sense, your first reaction would be, okay, well, during a heavy rainfall, that water that's collected on the surface area of that additional surface that's created from the berm will flow down into our backyards and potentially our basements in a worst-case scenario. Thoughts on that?
We're not changing really too much of the plateau, the current plateau. Obviously, right now, it is covered with trees. Eventually, the canopy will be greater, but it'll have grass, which will slow things down, and it's not going to be much different than the current situation.
Okay, so you're saying you don't see an additional hazard being created with more surface area that could collect and run the water-
It's not really-
Into our backyards.
I wouldn't say it's more surface area, it's comparable to what is out there now.
Okay.
And just to also kind of provide some history, and I'm sure there's people in the audience who know and can remember, the 2096 flood, not 2000, the 1996 flood, this entire area, the park, your neighborhood, was all underwater. So, in a catastrophic, as you described, event, your house, your neighborhood will be underwater. That's what we experienced in 1996.
Right, of course, yeah. I'm just looking for any additional hazards that may be created, trying to take due diligence and cover as many bases in the short period of time that we have here right now. So, let's see here, real quick. I did have a suggestion, if I may, to the city council members. Some of you seem interested in the topography and the terrain. I might suggest a quick walkthrough of the area, just to get a better view, because it is a very interesting area, especially when you get down into the berm. It's pretty unique in there, and to get a better view of what we see, and you're welcome to come into our backyard at our address as well, and walk around the park to see what's really there, and to get an idea as to how this will pan out and look in terms of the trees and whatnot. And then, kind of our takeaways are our asks, if you will. I guess I speak for the neighbors immediately around the park, that, you know, everyone has, we all have time to get a quick, to get a look, rather, at the final berm plans and the tree removal plans. And we also would like to be able to advise or participate or know what those specific trees are closest to our property, so we might add a little of our own local flavor, if you will, our own knowledge of our own properties to, perhaps, maybe we could take this one, but save that one. I know I'm speaking off the top of my head, of course, but I think that little ask would go a real long way in helping make this, the final phases of this project, making it as desirable as possible. As Gary mentioned before, we know it's a compromise. I don't think everyone will be unhappy if we just take the time within the parameters that we have to cover these last little bases and make this work. I think we're definitely on the right path right here, and again, with having input by the neighbors that are most involved, I think we should be able to come to a very beneficial end in terms of the construction and putting the basin together. One other thing, too, is that I would also, working with contractors in the risk management, insurance industry where I'm from, I do know that the guys on the ground do tend to get a little happy with their chainsaws, so we would just ask that we are able to ensure that there is some sort of function, as which I'm sure Public Works has, but that is monitored or used to monitor and to mark the trees that are slated for saving, because we all know what happens when that's not done. I thank you for your time and appreciate all the work everyone has been putting into this and sharing with the public. Thank you.
Dustin, do you have something else that-
I was just going to share that I have actually walked through this area and took video, if anybody is interested in-
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Again, if you can just give your name, please.
My name's Cole Lohman. I live at 1050 Pontiac Drive in Batavia. I'm right next to the park there. It's in the northwest corner, next to Brian Murphy's parcel as well. The only thing I'd like to kind of just call out and echo Brian's point of, it's, I think it would be a good idea, if you haven't seen the site, to either look at the video that Dustin had suggested, or come on out and see the site. I think that would really get everyone to be able to understand what those X's actually mean out there. It's a, you know, that site is, and all the trees that are in that wooded area, are one of the items that were really attractive when we, when I chose the house to move in there. It's something that we really hate to see go. We definitely understand the need, and we agree that the project definitely has merit, and we need to get the water issue addressed. But just also want to underscore that there's a lot that's being taken out from there that I don't know if it's fully represented in the diagram that we have up here. So, definitely appreciate the consideration here, but this is, you know, this is a big change.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Hi, my name's Jeff Krueger. I'm 686 Blackhawk Drive. What I'd like to do is maybe just share a little bit, and thank you, about the other side, right? So, I don't want to be here. I've been to too many of these meetings. I'm 686 Blackhawk Drive. It's been over 30 years, and I'm pretty frustrated. We bought a new home, Crestview Meadows, in 1988, my wife and I. It was one of the new houses there. It was 35 years ago. When I bought, my expectation was that the city would take care of certain things, that the electricity would be right, that the sewer would be right, that I would be able to get water, that the wastewater would be right, that everything was set up correctly. That's a reasonable expectation. I never bought a new house. That was my expectation for the city of Batavia. Within a short period of time, it became apparent that the system, the stormwater system that was set up, was not correct. It was not accurate. Over the years, Batavia's tried a number of things. You know, Gary's been very actively involved. He wasn't here when we moved in. I think you were, what, 2008 or 2000, something like that. So, they put the plug in on the west side, they tried cleaning up the marsh, they've got the pumping system set up, but finally, after some period of time, there's a realization that none of that is really working, that something needs to be done. So, Batavia started hiring some experts a couple of years ago, and I think from that, the only 100% solution is that gravity drain that we talked about, right, Gary? That's it. And everyone got real excited, and then Batavia nixed that plan when they started looking at the cost. It became too expensive to run a wastewater or a stormwater system out to the river. It just was too expensive. So, with that option out, Batavia moved to the second option, which is this option, the pump in the basin option. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but this option, the sump option, is not expected to be a total solution, not like the gravity drain. It's a good option, but it's not the 100% option. Is that right, Gary? Yeah. And so, it's a flawed, the recharge basin was a flawed system, was a flawed system from the beginning. I'm not sure how it was allowed, to your point, Gary, I'm not sure how it was allowed that it was, the development was set up with this system, but it was. It was allowed. It was approved by Batavia. So, we've had multiple homes in the area that flood on a regular basis. It's not every home, but the homes that do have issues have issues over and over and over again. Many of these homeowners have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on flood damage repair. I mean, we're talking about the trees, but think about these people. We have homeowners that can't sell their home because of this issue. It's a real problem. We have owners that can't afford the property insurance because they keep getting flooded. We have homeowners that face significant anxiety every time they forecast big rains. My wife is now the weather expert, and she goes over and over and over, we're going to have a big rain. You sure we should go away this weekend? I don't know if we can go away this weekend. I've shared my story. I've been flooded several times, and we're not talking about, gee, my sump pump just overflowed a little bit. You know, we all have sump pumps. You see how they fill up. We're not talking about that. We're talking about water shooting into my sump pump from that four-inch drain, shooting in. And I've got three pumps in my sump pump. I have two big pumps and a battery backup, and I'm pumping out over 4,000 gallons an hour, when this is at its critical part, and it lasts for longer than a week. And Gary and I talked about this. We talked about, well, what abouts, I said, if the electricity goes out for two seconds, that pump is filled and my basement is filling. That's how quick it is. And I don't think any of you people have had to deal with this, with that fear of destroying your basement within seconds. And I can't even have a backup, electrical backup system, because for the time it takes to switch over, my pump's filled and it's already damaging my basement. That's how serious it is. And then the pump runs nonstop for days. And when I talk about nonstop, most of your sump pumps cycle, right? Water fills up, the sump pump cycles it out, and then it goes through. When this is happening to my house and the other neighbors, that pump doesn't cycle. It's just the pumps on, both pumps are on all the time pushing water out, and all I'm doing is moving water from the base of my foundation outside, and it's just circulating, because there's no place for it to go until the water recedes in the area, right? Does that make sense? It does. So, I know this is serious, and I get the tree issue too. But in some of our discussions with the city, the question was asked, gee, would you consider even selling your house to the city of Batavia so we could raise it? That's how serious the problem is. That was one of the options. It wasn't presented as a firm option, but it was, would you consider it? So, I just want to reinforce what a big deal this is and what we're looking at here. And I mean, we're talking about trees, we're also talking about the preservation of homes, of my home, that I lived for 35 years and grew up with my family. And we're talking about the potential of the city buying my house and raising it for what? For the protection of some trees? So, we're back to this flawed basin plan. We know that the sump pump in the basin plan is not going to be 100% effective, but we're trying to maximize and get as much out of that as we can. I was trying to explain it to my wife tonight before I came here. We need as much as we can in there to minimize the problem, to buy us a little time so that our sump pumps can handle it. You know, my three-inch, my two one-and-a-half-inch pipes that pump out the water, I'm sure everybody here has a one-and-a-half-inch pipe on their sumps. I've got two one-and-a-halves, and they're blowing out water when this happens. So, it's taken 35 years for Batavia really to recognize and get to this point. I want to thank you all for where we're at. The city does not appear to be in a financial position to come up with a plan to that 100% plan, but I appreciate where you're at with this pump in the basin plan. I really do. And it looks like, and from the conversations, we're talking about a lot about the tree preservation. I love trees, trees are important. I think it's, heck, when I came out here, wife and I bought this place 35 years ago, all we had was, there were no trees. It was dirt, dust, and mud, right? I went out and planted a number of trees. My wife thought I was nuts. I think I planted a dozen or 15 trees. She goes, you're out of your mind. And over time, I've had to thin out those trees. I planted some fast-growing, but I've still got eight trees left. I've got maples, oaks, pines, seven of which are bigger than my house. I love my trees, and I know the neighbors. They love to look at trees, too. And however, as much as I love these trees, and for the 35 years that they took to grow, if a neighbor came to me and said, or the city came to me and said, you know what? Your trees are creating a problem, and if you don't cut these trees down, your basement, your neighbor's house is going to be damaged, or their basement's going to be damaged or flooded, I'd cut them down tomorrow. I think anybody reasonably thinking about this would do the same thing. It's the right thing to do. So, I want to thank each of you for how far you've gotten on this, for the plan. It's been very frustrating. I appreciate you expediting it as quickly as possible. I understand there's a sensitivity around the trees. I just want to thank you for everything you're doing, and I want to say, may you all be blessed with wisdom and discernment in making your decision on this situation, because it's a long time coming, and it's been very, very frustrating. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anybody else on council have any other questions? So, Andrea, and Scott obviously has to go out there, what are the next steps at this point?
We'd be looking at finalizing this plan, as you mentioned, with Scott, taking a look at that, and we could see, you know, we have to work with Drew and community development to make sure everything lines up with the ordinance, which I know Scott has worked with them on that, so he kind of did that first run-through, but we have to do that. And then V3 is finalizing some of the specifications for the plans to go out, so the contract documents and such. And Brian, I know you mentioned protecting the trees, there is a tree protection fence in there. a tree protection fence in there that will have to go around the trees. All the trees are marked and tagged, so you could take this plan out there and go see all the silver tags on the trees and figure out which one it is. And then as soon as that is finalized, as long as council agrees to move forward, we can put this out to bid. I would like to have it go out as soon as possible, so I can get it on the February 19th City Council for approval, backing it up to February 13th COW. And then having to have, the latest I could have it back is February 8th to get it on those agendas. And I want it out two or three weeks. So it is kind of rapid, and I thought this is the best way to get the trees while they're kind of in their dormant state. And then in the meantime, we are still working on final engineering, and those plans are expected to be completed near the end of February to go out to bid. And then we would do the same cycle with contracts, hopefully by April.
Yeah, I mean, if nobody has any objections, I don't see any reason why when you guys are ready to send it out to bid, that you sent it out to bid. That's why it still comes to us for a vote. So there's still a voting session. We're not going to miss anything. We're not, that doesn't mean we've made a decision yet, so everybody knows out there. It just allows you guys to move forward so that we don't lose time. And if there's no objections, I'm okay with that.
Is there some possibility, a contingent in the budget to, if we possibly have some trees, if there's locations to be able to do that?
I think we are going to wait till construction is done. Part of the final engineering plans will be a tree replacement plan in there. So I don't know, are you looking at the basin?
No, I'm just, I'm just bringing up that question because I know that on the east side, you know, we happen to have some extra money in the budget to where we're able to go out and replace some of the trees. I don't know if you are foreseeing right now this possibility where there could be that possibility.
Oh, no, there is that. That's a requirement through the tree ordinance. So that was 154 trees that we have approximately on this plan. It may be modified slightly when it goes out to bid. But based on the prevailing wage cost, Scott gave me $500 a tree to have them planted. Do the math, it's $77,000 to have those. So we do have money. We're going to have to budget it. It's part of the project.
We'll be planting 140-some-odd trees that she just mentioned. We need to talk with the park districts, as Andrea already said, to see if the park districts want any trees planted on their properties. Obviously, we will be planting within the footprint of the basin. And if we run out of space, we'll be planting in the parkway, public right-of-ways in that neighborhood in the immediate area.
Moving on to item eight, it's a presentation for Water Street Studios. Jessica? Oh, and by the way, let the record reflect that Alderman Chanzet arrived at 7:07.
Hello, I'm Jessica Jekman. I'm president of the Water Street Studios Board of Directors, and I really appreciate you having us here today to talk to you about Water Street Studios. And with me, I have many of our other board members in support and to answer any questions So I'm sure many of you are very familiar with Water Street Studios. The idea was really started about 2007 to have a place where artists and art supporters could come together in shared purpose. In 2009, the physical site of Water Street Studios came into being. We're just right down the road, and we've been there for the last 15 years. Water Street Studios was a collective effort, both in its origin and in the ongoing support from the city of Batavia, from our landlord, BEI, the Dempsey family, the Hollis family, and so many others along the way. And you might already know this, but I'll just remind you a little bit about Water Street. We're unique in that we offer multiple arts and arts appreciation aspects. We have 26 different studios with resident artists. We offer a school of art with classes for adult and young learners, and those cover all of the Fox Valley and beyond. We have about 1,400 students that are enrolled. We have two beautiful galleries downstairs, and we have just opened a community gallery upstairs, where community members can now answer open calls and show their art in a professional gallery. We have a clay lab that is expanding every day, and we're involved in the beautification of the city of Batavia through our Public Art Committee, which most recently helped with the Petunia mural that is right across from Bar Evolution. So we are a community of artists, art lovers, students, and makers. One of the things that we love the most about Batavia is its commitment to art and artisans. Water Street Studios in many aspects aspires to be the epicenter of this, and we want to bring people together in our shared love of art. As you head to our front doors, you can see Art in the Alley, a project we did in celebration of our 10th anniversary, celebrating and working with local nonprofits in the area. And in addition to leading the new mural across from Bar Evolution, we have art showings in galleries, in stores, in restaurants, in breweries around Batavia and in the surrounding areas. And we aspire to bring more public art to Batavia with our Public Art Committee. We also lead community outreach. We work with residents in Section 8 housing, like Mercy Housing. We work with Batavia Public Art, Batavia Public Schools students, and with seniors at the homestead. We host Winterfest Artisan Market every year in coordination with Batavia Main Street. We are integrated into the fabric of this town, and our intentions are to do that even more. Water Street Studios has been impacted. Like many nonprofit organizations, especially those in the arts, Water Street Studios is on a constant hunt for funding. COVID hit us like it did so many other nonprofit communities and arts organizations who thrive from an Although we did receive some state funding, we were impacted because students weren't able to come into class, art openings couldn't be in person, staff was reduced, and all of the board even was virtual and significantly challenged. We've also had a turnover in staff, including our executive directors, and a model that was previously based really largely on fundraising and development versus maximizing the operational revenue opportunity from our organization. So we are in a rebuilding phase, and we have very positive momentum. We have a full board of directors, many of who you know and love who are here today with us. And I truly believe this group has the skill and the ability to strategically lead this organization. We have 100% occupancy with our artists, our resident artists. The school of art is thriving. We've got new classes like metalsmithing and jewelry making, and we just opened our spring semester for registration. We're advertising and marketing. We're more active on socials now, and we're driving event rentals, including participating in the Geneva Chamber of Commerce Wedding Walk next month. And we are in the process of expanding our clay lab. We are unique as a nonprofit because we do have revenue-generating components, like the license agreements we sign with our resident artists and our school of art, but that alone doesn't keep us afloat. It's our goal to have an increased revenue base plus an ongoing focus on development for corporate, individual, and grant giving. It will take a while to rebuild to the place of stability that we desire, and in the meantime, we need your help to bridge this funding. I know Laura has probably familiarized you with our proposal, but I will walk you through it at a high level. $25,000 of the proposal will be used from TIF funds to support infrastructure and safety updates in the studios. And I'll just give you a few examples. We have wooden stairs that are on the outside of our building that lead up to more resident artist studios and to the community gallery, and those need securing, and they need to be stabilized. We have a lift so that we are fully accessible, but right now it is not functional for someone to operate on their own, so we need to fix that. We have needs for our HVAC and ventilation systems. In order to keep everybody healthy and safe with the particles we use in our making and in our clay lab, we need to make sure that ventilation is on point. The subflooring needs stabilization, and the flooring in the clay lab was warped after a flood, and that needs to be fixed. And we have an updated keyless entry system. We need to accommodate all of the people that come and go in a system like this. The other $100,000 will be a forgivable loan based on a 90% occupancy rate of our resident artists, and this will be used more on operational expenses, things like staff salaries, bringing back additional staff, more infrastructure build-out to support an expansion of our clay lab and our ability to service more events and activities. In addition to the funding, we're focused on other efficiencies to lean into our operating expenses, to lean our operating expenses, and to grow revenue. We hired a fundraising manager this summer, and she has helped us build a case for support. We're actively sourcing grants and building our donor base. We have reduced our staff. We are relying on volunteers to keep our gallery open to the public at this point. We are expanding the clay lab with more subscribers who pay an annual fee to have access to the lab and to the kiln. We did not replace our last executive director who left in the late spring. I am acting as the interim director, so those funds can be utilized in other ways. And ultimately, we really need your help with funding to bridge the gap until we become fully self-sustaining None of us want a Batavia without a Water Street Studios in it. We want to continue to be a part of the build-out of the arts district, coordinating with other local businesses and artisans to keep the arts at the forefront of culture in Batavia. We want to continue to support artists. We want to continue to support and nurture a love of art in students of all ages. We want to support professional art in this community. We want to be in the community, bringing art and culture building to those that can not otherwise be engaged in arts and the development that it brings. We want to give community members a chance to showcase in a professional gallery. We want to host meaningful events in resident lives in a studio that showcases local artists. We want Water Street Studios to succeed, and to do that, we need your help. We're very grateful for your time and your attention today, and I'd love to open it up for any questions to have, and also to invite you to join us this Friday evening. Every second Friday of the month, we have a new art opening. And so this Friday, if you'd like to come check us out, I'd be happy to give you a tour or walk you around our facility. It's from 6:00 to 9:00, and we'd love for you to join us. So I have the board here, and any of us would be happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Jessica. Any questions?
I'd just like to give a little bit more background for those who might not be familiar with the special relationship. Jessica mentioned in her presentation that the city, as well as their landlord, was supportive when they first came into being in our community. And but for a similar financial support that they're asking for today, it likely would not have been able to get off the ground at that time. They are now facing, similar to other arts organizations across this nation, and even, you know, regionally and locally, a very existential crisis that was imposed upon them by COVID. And so they are here once again asking that this Water Street Studios is very fundamental to our identification as an art-supporting community, as a place for makers of art and artisanal goods. And so, you know, as the staff member, I'm very supportive of us providing this support to them at this time. Now, as Jessica indicated in her presentation, only $25,000 are for activities that could be supported through TIF funding. Those are permanent improvements to the building. The other $100,000 forgivable loan, because that would be more supporting them in their operations, that would have to come from a general fund. It is not budgeted. However, if you saw fit, it could be a way that those funds that we have designated from the ARPA funding in order to support our business community, we had said a couple of hundreds that aside for that purpose. The only purpose that we have designated thus far is the $50,000 in support, $10,000 per year to support two additional scholarships through the Chamber of Commerce for the program through the Entrepreneurial Center. And so there still remains $150,000 in that particular budgeted amount that could be used for this purpose.
Thank you, Laura. You have any questions, comments?
Mark, this is Alan.
Go ahead, Alan.
I was around when this started, and I really thought that the amount of money that we, you know, spent out of the TIF and out of the general fund when we originally did this was one of the best uses of that money in our downtown because of all the small businesses, I'll say, as the artists that were there that started and the community that it developed. And I would hate to see us lose that now by not being able to come up with this money that we do have and put this towards Water Street and, you know, keep them afloat through this to try to, you know, keep that in our downtown. I do believe it generates a lot of traffic for, you know, all the other downtown businesses, especially on the nights that they have things going on. I mean, I think it fits in well with a lot of the new businesses that are downtown. Both, you know, things that are established in town and new businesses that are there, I think, really would benefit from the traffic that this generates on a regular basis.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, I certainly support this idea, given the fact that this basically is kind of a revolving or growing movement that started in Batavia in 1955. And in that year, there was a small group of artists, all of which, I was thinking the other day after we talked about this, you know, it was Marge Rundo and a bunch of them, everybody's dead that was in this initial group. And they came up with the idea that the Saturday after Labor Day, the city would close off West Wilson Street from Batavia Avenue to Lincoln, and they would allow any local artists that wanted to bring their artwork in and set it up in the street in front of Old McLean School. And there were some people that thought this was, you gotta be kidding me. And this thing really took off. And I mean, at the, I was the mayor when they finally decided that it was too big to really kind of go, and it was spewing off into all kinds of different directions. And that's when we came up with the, one of the reasons they came up with the idea of creating the arts studio in Batavia, because there was a number of people who said, "If I only had a place that I could set up and have a studio and be there full-time and demonstrate and show my work, this would be, you know, another growth factor in the art movement in Batavia." And so I've had several other mayors in here over the years asking me, "How did you get this thing going over there?" And I said, "Well, it wasn't just something that just started right now. It was an evolution process, started with a bunch of artists once a year setting up their art in the middle of the street." And literally, thousands of people showed up during that seven or eight hours they were open over there, and people sold art and bought. I remember Peg Bond was very active in this whole thing at the beginning. There was a bunch of them, and as I say, everybody's dead, but I think it's a good tribute and a legacy to all those who really started this, that this is continuing on and that you're growing the degree you are. And, you know, like everybody else, COVID stepped you back a couple steps, but I think there's enough new artists in town, along with the existing ones, that we really have an opportunity here to make art one of the growing aspects of Batavia that really sets us apart from many of the rest of the communities in the area.
Thanks for coming. I just, you know, I was looking at the photos you presented tonight, and I was just really realizing that Water Street Studios is a place, a facility, a welcoming place for people of all ages in our community and surrounding communities. And it's kind of hard to find places that really meet residents and our members of our community from just every stage of life. And I think that's a beautiful part of what Water Street offers. And I appreciate that you try to make it as accessible to our community. You offer free events, and you offer, you know, some of the classes, and you try to make those make those financially accessible as possible. Even this past summer, my son did the one that collaborated with Fermilab and that was, he really enjoyed that and that was really eye-opening. So thank you. Everything that you guys do in our town, really appreciate it.
I would definitely be in support of this. I remember when Water Street first opened, I just had a little kid and I would take her to Art in the Eye all the time. I really see, as I think back, as Water Street really being the catalyst of what started getting Batavia on the map, because it was something different the other communities didn't have. And Art in the Eye helped bring that. And then that helped bring the shops. And it helped evolve with what's happening at our farmer's market, with the artisan markets, and how you host the Winter Fest every year. And so there's so much, besides just having artists there doing their work, it's been so much to the community and just open to, you know, to residents to be able to come see that. I would love to be able to see Art in the Eye come back again, but I know that that was a huge financial challenge. But I can tell you, my daughter loved going to it every year. But I do see, I do see Water Street as what really brought Batavia onto the map compared to other communities.
Okay. So I haven't heard any objections on this, so obviously this needs to be brought.
Good. So what we'll do from here is draw up the agreement reflecting our financial support for you to approve at a Cowan City. Very much for being here today.
Thank you so much. Hope to see you on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They did adjustments, but they don't seem to be good adjustments. We'll keep working on it.
Okay, we'll move to item number nine. That's ordinance 2024-2, authorizing execution of an option to purchase property at 330 and 338 Webster. And that's you, Laura.
That is me.
Those are your initials.
As you know, it has been a long journey to try to locate an appropriate property to relocate the food pantry and clothes closet, as well as the toy drive, to find a permanent home for the toy drive, so it doesn't have, you know, free available space every year. And we have, this property came on the market recently. Being that we are the city, we were aware that there were many, many people who were interested in it, because people asked us saying, you know, can we do this here, can we do that there? At the same time, it really looks like it has a lot of opportunity for the food pantry and clothes closet being located so close to our downtown and yet not really on like a main street. As well, it is a little over an acre property. It has a 14,000-square-foot building on it. It does not look like that, that building would be able to be used. So the plan in our mind is probably that building is demolished and we build something new, but we'll maintain the existing building, because then we can move the toy drive into those existing buildings while we build the new food pantry and clothes closet and the space for the toy drive. Anticipate maybe a 15,000 to 20,000-foot building. But the reason why this is buying an option to purchase has a lot to do with the fact that we were very fortunate to receive a $3 million grant through HUD made available to us when we were part of the congressional district represented by Lauren Underwood. And so part of the HUD process is an environmental assessment that takes a bit of time to complete. And so by purchasing this option, we are paying the owner of that property to take it off the market for a period of six months, which will allow us to do the environmental assessments and have HUD review that. We anticipate that we would be able to complete that action within that period of time. And so what's before you today is the option to purchase. It is in, for $50,000. In the event that we would decide not to exercise the option within the six months, we would be refunded $25,000 of the option price. In the event that we decided to exercise the option to purchase the property, the $50,000 would be converted to earnest money and applied to the price of the property.
Questions, comments? Tim?
I was just going to ask, we might not know, but are we talking about putting up like a prefab building? Are we going to make a nice, pretty building? And then you said we had $3 million, which maybe we have a little more than.
I think that we would be toward the side of a, as low cost of a building as possible, but one that would stand the test of time. So, you know, that this would be something that would be there for 50 years or more. More. But, you know, we are also not going to, you know, have it be a brick-clad building. You know, we're not, we want to be as, use those $3 million as wisely as possible. We realize that probably $3 million is not going to get us to turning the key and opening it and it's a full-blown food pantry. We will likely have to seek additional funding to get the project completely across the line. But we have avenues and plans for seeking additional grant funding. The food pantry, we'll do that side of it. For the city's part, we're going to take that $3 million as far as it can go to get the envelope of a building on that site.
Justin?
Hey, imagine you might not be able to disclose this. What were the other proposed uses for the site that the city were contacted by?
You know, if Scott and Anthony were here, they might be able to answer that question. One that I can think of was a theater, a community theater group wanted to build on the site.
I hope they're interested in other sites in town as well. Hope we're not just kicking them out, because that is also.
Not at all. We always look for, you know, alternatives for those. And, you know, it was before we were considering what we wanted to do with the site.
Also, I know, I know we have a limited scope on this project that we want to do, but I believe the Bikes for Batavia organization has also been looking for some placement. That could be part of it. Obviously, that'd be an option, not necessarily part of the core.
Yeah, you know, of course, the food pantry and clothes closet and toy drive will be the priority organizations there, but we can consider other community organizations that need space as well for that.
Abby?
It would be great to see, even if we had to stretch that $3 million, beyond $3 million, if there were rev options to incorporate onto that site, if a place needed, office space that could rent to help offset the costs of funding and maintaining a building. Would definitely like it to see it follow, you know, whatever gets approved in our downtown plan, making sure it's multiple stories, that we're making really good functional use of that space and not one-story strip mall kind of development of any sort.
So would you anticipate that the city would, like, for instance, if it was like a residential use above it, that we would increase the budget for the project in order to incorporate those items?
I would support a discussion about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would add, you know, thinking of the bike project and that the building has expandability if something happens in the future, because that's a large lot that, and whether some of that lot is available for the Park District or whatever as well, if there's anywhere where we need to, that they're looking to do any land swaps, I don't... If there's like playground equipment in that area, outside of like JB Nelson is like the only playground that's right there, but I know the Park District has a park right across the street, so maybe they're not interested. But just thinking of making sure we explore other opportunities for it, because it's more than, the footprint is more than we need.
Yes.
So, and is the parking, do we determine that that's enough? Because that's like 20 spots, right?
So where the building would be built is where the existing parking and training field is. And then the new parking would be where the existing. There are no plans at this point, so.
Oh, I mean, oh, yeah, true. Like, there's no plans for this. There's our downtown code. And so that would be in variance of our.
Obviously, that'll come up for discussion later. So we're not there. Anything else? Would like to make a motion on this ordinance?
I'll move.
Second?
I have a motion in a second on Norton's 2024-2. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll put that on, we can't do that on consent, can we?
If we put it on consent, and if we can't, it'll be on the regular agenda.
Okay. Project status?
Okay. Just wanted to talk about some discussions that we're going to have at upcoming meetings. We have scheduled a presentation and discussion item on the January 23rd agenda to discuss video gaming. At some point last, toward the end of last year, the council requested to revisit our ordinance and potentially make some adjustments to that. And a mailing has been sent out to all the existing license holders inviting them to participate in that discussion. We also scheduled a discussion on the single-use bag fee for the February 13th agenda. Again, we sent out a mailing to all of the businesses who are affected by the single-use bag fee ordinance, as well as invited the BEC to participate in that discussion. And that would be just to review the program and how it's functioning thus far, revenues that had been collected, and then perhaps a discussion of how the revenues that have been collected might potentially be used. We also have a meeting, NIMPA, the Northern Illinois Immunist Power Association, of which Batavia, Geneva, and Rochelle are a part, have their meeting scheduled for Wednesday, January 31st at 7:00 in council chambers. And it's a session to provide members of the public with information about how that organization works and, you know, answer any questions that people might have about it. And then also wanted to let you know that, I don't know if you noticed, but Dimples Donuts is going to be relocating from their current location at 328 East Wilson Street. They've decided to call 833 East Wilson Street their new home. It's a standalone building that is, you know, conveniently across from the Station 1 Fire Department. So I'm pretty sure there's a few firefighters that are going to be pretty happy about that. And then also wanted to let you know that probationary police officer Raymond Williamson has started his 16-week training at Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, and he's expected to graduate at the end of April, at which point he'll return for an additional 16-week field training period with the Batavia Police Department. And let's see, our IT department has installed a bunch of AV equipment throughout the buildings over the course of the last couple of weeks, kind of a conclusion to our remodeling project that we've had here, adding AV equipment to the conference rooms, which have been updated, as well as, you'll notice in each one of the lobbies, that there are informational signs that provide the public with information about upcoming events, as well as, you know, projects that we have going on. So thanks to IT for helping us upgrade that equipment. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions?
Yes. I just have a question on, one metric that I thought that would be really good is the one that was shared with us from Trader Joe's, where before this started, they knew how many bundles they were purchasing and what they're currently purchasing. So if we could encourage those businesses to maybe, like, I think it was, I don't know, certain number of bundles of bags that they were purchasing compared to what they're buying. If we, if maybe they could get that metrics from the different vendors, that might be a good metric.
Sure. Actually, Max collected that information from each one of the stores prior to. It seemed like Trader Joe's drastically underestimated the amount of bags that they were using when they, Max is going to share some of it, because when they first started submitting their revenues on the bags, it was much more than they had estimated in the survey. Is that correct?
So the way we got these numbers was a combination of sometimes calling stores and asking managers, sometimes calling corporate, sometimes just asking them to guesstimate. So I, and I initially said this when we presented them, not a whole lot of confidence in the original purchasing numbers. I could go back and try to find out if those have changed. Most of them were on an annual basis. So I don't know if we'd have the updated numbers, but.
I think annual, I mean, I guess is okay. I mean, if we could get monthly, I mean, that's always a good metric. I mean, at least now we're into this, they know what number we're looking for, but I think that that is an important one. In that way, year over year, we can see and compare what that number looks like.
Right, yes. I think that would be a good statistic to use, the actual numbers of bags that they're using and, you know, what they're doing. But knowing that more goes into that than just the bag fee, right? It has to do with economy and things like that and if they're shopping online versus whether they're shopping in stores and trends like that, too.
And I would expect the number to be up in November and December because of the holidays compared to other days. So for me, when I'm looking at it, I can't, the program is successful or not, I want to be able to see two years of data to compare that.
Yeah, I just want to add, there's a number of businessmen who have contacted me that if you're going to have another meeting about this, they would like to come and speak.
Okay.
And so I think we're going to have quite a few here. And I don't know, I'd encourage you all to go into Target, because they've just erected signs at their front door in which they encourage you to bring your bags with you into the store and then if you do, they'll give you.
Five cents.
Five cent rebate. Instead of charging you 10, they'll give you five cent back. So.
Target had a five cent rebate policy for a long time. Many.
That's what the sign, I took a picture and showed it to Laura today, because you go into either door of Target and there's big signs there that say, please start using reusable bags and we'll pay, we'll pay, we'll give you a nickel credit for every bag you bring in.
I'm not adding any bags. Laura, anybody have any others? Okay. Then we will move to executive session. We'll vote to adjourn current session. So can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we'll not come out of this with anything.
Right.